As the mayor of the town of Clayton, I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Clayton Town Council to order. I ask you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Most gracious and heavenly Father, we thank you so much for the many blessings of this day, and we ask, Lord, now that you be with us as we proceed with the business for the town of Clayton. For it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Under item 5A, we'd like to just remove the introduction of Sam Johnson Phillips. She wasn't able to stay this evening, so we will get her on another agenda.
Perfect. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda presented.
So moved. Second?
Have a motion and a second for approval. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Up next is your consent agenda.
I move we approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Under administrative items is the Sam's Branch WRF program update.
All right. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Louis Duffy. I am the project manager for the Sam's Branch WRF and some of the other associated projects. And with me this afternoon, I have Adam Sharp. He's the project principal for HDR, who is the town's owner's advisor. And we're going to give you a rundown on what's been going on with the WRF and these other projects.
Thank you, Louis. Evening.
Good evening.
Excuse me, agenda. Just do a quick, you know, brief program update. Louis and I are going to tag team a little bit of an update on the status of all these programs, projects on this big program, give you a quick 90, 120 day look ahead, and then talk a little bit about flow management long term, a little bit beyond into future looking. Just a quick reminder of everything that encapsulates or is included in this program. There's a lot of things going on, a lot of moving parts. Louis and the team, a lot of team members doing a great job managing all this. You know, there's, you know, two, two major transmission projects going on, be able to carry wastewater flow from the Little Creek facility all the way to the new Sam's Branch water reclamation facility location, new pump station upgrade and Forest Main bring industrial flows from the East Clayton industrial area back to the plan. And a new project, I shouldn't say new projects, it's been there, we've just broken it out separately, is one we're calling the Clayton Raleigh Pump Station Expansion. That project, I'll talk a little bit more about, is to allow you to leverage the complete contractual allocation of capacity you have with the city of Raleigh. So just a good map, kind of visualizes everything, good leave behind for your just reminders of what's included in this large program. Behind that large program, there's a lot of stuff going on, a lot of moving parts, a lot of people and firms involved. I like this chart just to kind of keep us all calibrated to who's working on what as far as firms and who's under, where we, where you all have approved contracts for contractors to execute this construction work, the latest being for the Sam's Branch facility of being a fail construction. So again, just a good reminder, we've got two more projects out to the right here, the ECIA and the Clayton Raleigh, that are still to go out to bid for construction in the coming months. So those ones are, ones are blank at this time as far as who the contractors are, so. And please, please stop me anytime with questions. And I'm going to flip to Louis to talk a little bit, give some of the updates on some of the projects.
Yes, so here we have an aerial of the, the property down there near the Neuse River. It's been cleared. You can kind of see the trailer complex there as well as a stockpile of some of the soils from the grading. This is a rendering of the design, which I'm sure you guys have probably seen once or twice. Where we're starting, or where a fail is starting, we gave them a notice to proceed of January 9th of this year, so that puts substantial completion July 8th of 2025. And they've moved in, they've mobilized, they have some equipment out there, they've begun excavations. At the, at the end of the bioreactor, which is the big rectangular object there, there's three clarifiers, and they've actually dug down to subgrade because they're going to start with those. We have a subcontractor, CROM, that's going to do all those round tanks for us. So they're coming April 3rd. So we only have a month to get some of the pipe that's underneath those tanks set in place. From there, the, the tanks will be going, and then we'll start digging the Influent Pump Station, which is in kind of the back left corner near the greenway. That's where all your wastewater is going to flow into and then pump up to the headworks. And also, we will be starting on the bioreactor because that's the largest structure and will take the most time. In addition, we have started to receive more materials at the site and have recently executed actually the first change order of the, of the contract to add the generators into their scope of work. So we're getting tier four generators that will provide the town the ability to peak shave and to be a little bit more sustainable from an energy standpoint. So one of the, the conveyance projects, like Adam said, is the Little Creek Forest Main Gravity Sewer. The Forest Main is 100% done. That included two, no, three bores, one under 70, one under Main Street, and then one underneath the railroad that all, you know, went according to plan, which was a great success because those can be a little uncertain at times. Where we're moving right now, we probably have 300 feet left of pipe to lay up towards Front Street, right there behind Spinning Mill. And then the restoration of the greenway and getting that all buttoned up. Another one of the projects, and that was JF Wilkerson is the contractor on that side, the Little Creek Pump Station, which is at the existing Little Creek site. They have finished the hydraulic structure, which you're seeing on your screen there, of the wet well and the headworks, and they have actually started to backfill. They're probably 80% done with that at the moment, which has been great because the, the wet weather was slowing us down there, but they're starting to make some good headway there. We'll start laying the Influent Pipeline in the upcoming months, and then setting some of the process piping and, and equipment and the duckbanks and, and associated work with that. And then for ECIA, I'm going to turn it back over to Adam. Were there any questions on any of that?
No, but I would just say the scale is amazing, you know, to see a full grown man standing on there, looks about like this big in the picture, right? So the scale is, it's amazing. It's a, it's a, it's a ginormous, ginormous project. Yeah. It's impressive.
No, no great pictures for this one. This one's still in design. I threw the colors on this one just to show, this, this one right here is, is a really good coordination effort. You know, that green line coming in, that's coming from Griffles. Griffles is actually constructing that line, so we have to be mindful of that. The purple line is what the county's bringing, a project from the county. Orange is all the towns, the expansion of the pump station, the Forest Main. You know, not, not, not much to talk about here, other than it's a real good coordination effort between the three different entities to make sure that nobody's tripping over each other, and the designs are all incorporating each other's consideration, consideration of each other's projects. So good, good story there. Oop, wrong one. Last one here, Clayton Raleigh Pump Station. You know, that one, essentially, you know, fairly straightforward project, changing out pumps, changing out some electrical, you know, some, some neat, I guess, 3D renderings of what actually is happening there, the orange being the new stuff. So, you know, the goal here is for this one, to get this one out to bid by the end of the month, early next month, to get that rolling again, so that, you know, the town can fully capitalize on the contractual capacity that you've already agreed to with, with the city of Raleigh at the Neuse River Plant. So, like you said, Mr. Mayor, you know, just good, a good chance to, to look at this stuff. The scale of this program is immense. There is a lot of stuff going on, so I appreciate the opportunity to kind of brief you, give you an update, you got a pulse on things, you can ask questions, but I think it's, it's just a real good important checkpoint. So the other scale of this, not just the scale of the infrastructure, the scale of the dollars is, is big too. You know, right now, we're in the 270, $275 million range for all of this work. So, you know, this kind of shows you a little bit of what the, the roll up is. I guess nobody behind me can see the, the, the legend here. The blue is what's actually already been contracted. So you, so you all have agreed contractually to all of those construction contracts. The, the, the orange or red there, that's an amendment that, that's been provided. So, you know, I would say Little Creek Conveyance, that one's fairly close to being complete. You know, the change order opportunities there are small. Pump Station's moving along really well, change orders there, there's still potential, but that, that's getting smaller as they progress, as you saw in the pictures. The green, I'll pull these up here. Now, just a note, I know the bars look the same size or similar, but pay attention to the scale, because the scale matters. The upper left one for Sam's Branch, you know, that's where the bulk of the contracted dollars have been allocated right now. And just to give you a percentage, about 85% of the total program costs has been contracted, locked in, okay? So that, there's that. There are opportunities, obviously, for change orders, if things, the conditions change, that, that's still there, but we manage that. The biggest outlier right now is the, is the ECIA project, the pump station and conveyance to bring that, the flow, industrial flow back to Sam's Branch. That one's still in design and has not been contracted yet. So right now, that's, that's an estimated value at this point. So, you know, seeing the pictures, seeing the progress, seeing the scale is important, seeing the dollars. I know, I know you all have a vested interest and are, are interested in where we, we stand with, with the dollars right now, so. All right. Thinking, thinking a little bit forward, I know that, you know, we see, we know the plant's coming online, goal, you know, target here is 2025. I know you've got a lot of development folks that are coming to the table, looking for capacity. I, I know, you know, where everything's at. You know, so the chart on the left here, left, the right, excuse me, that, that's showing kind of a breakdown of, you know, looking all the way out to 2045, what the components of flow are that are going to be tributary or come to the town, and, and where things are going. That black line that kind of does this weird up and down jog, that's your permitted capacity, okay? So you can see the comparison of that, that black line against the increasing flows that are going to come to the town in those bar charts, okay? I would say everything through the 2028, 27 timeframe, you know, with active development, things you've already allocated, that's probably the most firm. As you get beyond that, things get a little bit, bit squishier as far as what's been committed or what may actually be realized. So I say all that, I show you this, just to give you a picture of, you know, HDR and staff of the town are already think, even though we're in construction, we're already thinking about Phase Two and what that's going to look like from a timing standpoint, from a phasing standpoint, because that ultimately influences, you know, dollars and cost permitting and things of that nature that, that are important to, you know, when do you uncork Phase Two or start thinking about it? You know, do we need to start thinking about designing Phase Two in the next year? Those kinds of, we're asking ourselves those kinds of questions. Is it eight? Is it 10? You know, how can we incrementally expand this facility and make smart decisions about what's, what's next for Phase Two? As well as thinking through, you know, that last bullet point, you know, the flow percentages by user type. If you look out, you know, all that maroon at the top, that is all, that's all industrial flow coming from the East Clayton industrial area. A lot of that we understand, a lot of that flow we understand as far as what's been contractually obligated or what's been communicated, but beyond that, you know, it's, it's speculative as far as what's going to come and when it's going to come. And that directly influences, directly influences the phasing, the timing of Phase Two, to be honest. So just wanted to give you, we talked a lot about the here and now, we're also thinking a lot about Phase Two and out into the future and tracking with that. So I felt like that was an important piece to make sure you all have a good pulse on, that we're not just focused on, you know, day to day right now, but also looking out to the future. So with that, happy to take any questions. And I pre, again, I appreciate you guys, let me come and, and give you an update.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All right. Good job. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Very much. Appreciate it. Up next is going to be the introductions and special presentations, and I'll begin by giving the floor to James Blaylock, Utilities Maintenance Superintendent.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, staff. I'm James Blaylock, Maintenance Superintendent with the Water Resources Department. I'm here tonight to introduce the newest member of our team, Mr. Michael Blue. Michael graduated from Smithfield-Selma High School in 2009 with the Early Graduation Program. After that, he joined the United States Army and served our great nation for seven years. After the Army, went out and joined a private company that built propane tanks, or trucks, excuse me. He learned a lot of skills about different mechanics and diesel and propane engines, which I think will be a valuable asset to my department, since we have generators and bypass pumps that utilize those engines. Michael understands the concept of teamwork and how it relates to the organization as a whole, and he's got a can-do attitude, and I'm excited to have him on my team. Michael.
I'd just like to thank the town of Clayton for the opportunity and look forward to working for the town and doing great things.
Awesome. Welcome.
Thank you.
And thank you for your service.
Yes, sir.
That's awesome. All right. Up next, we'll give the floor to Nathaniel Shelton, the Communication Director.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Town Council, Town Manager. Tonight, I have the wonderful pleasure of introducing most of you to Casey Cunningham. She is our new part-time communication specialist. You may have already seen some of her work on Facebook. She's hit the ground running, and we couldn't be more thrilled to have a former WRAL TV news journalist slash reporter in our ranks. And I'll turn it over to her to let her say a few words.
Great. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. Hello. Like Nathaniel said, my name is Casey Cunningham. I've spent about the past decade as a TV news reporter and journalist, but my heart is with good news, and there's certainly a lot of good news stories to tell here in Clayton, so I'm really excited to be part of the team, excited to share those stories, you know, about team members and just what's going on in our community here as well. I'm also feeling really appreciative to be part of this communications team led by Nathaniel and working with CAT as well. They are a great team, being in the office, you know, and seeing kind of what's going on. There's a lot to do and a lot of stories to tell, and they are just complete pros, and I couldn't be more grateful to be led by Nathaniel as well. So really excited, you know, a little pitch to you, if you have any story ideas, kaycunningham@townofclaytonnc.org. So send me all your story ideas. We're excited to tell them, a part of the communications team. Thanks.
Welcome.
Thanks.
And don't be blown away when everybody hits you up with like 500 story ideas, okay? Remember, you asked for it, okay? Awesome. All right. And up next will be Greg Nelson.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Rich. I'm here tonight to introduce Alicia Ballard. Alicia is going to fill our part-time custodial position. She's going to help with all of our weekend work. Where you at? Also with some of our weekday work. Alicia's got 13 years of experience in running her own custodial services, so we're really proud to bring her aboard into our team. So if you will, please, welcome Alicia.
Hey, how are you doing? I would like to thank you all for the opportunity to work for the town of Clayton and just the experience and be able to grow with you and learn and move forward. Thank you.
Awesome. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
That's great. She's like, shoo, I'm so glad that's over with. That's awesome.
Good night.
All right. And then our Deputy Fire Chief, Matt Sutton.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Deputy Fire Chief Matt Sutton. Tonight, I got two of our newest members and one of our promotions, they just recently got promoted. So I'll start out with firefighter Charlie Evans in the middle. Charlie's originally from Maryland, lived in Virginia for 12 years and moved to Clayton in the middle of 2020. Charlie has a little over six years of prior professional firefighting experience, served five years with the Lynchburg Fire Department and a year with the Apex Fire Department. Charlie is a third generation firefighter and having been raised in a family that loves the fire service and the brotherhood that comes with it. Charlie has three kids and is an active member of the Clayton community.
I just want to thank you for the opportunity. It's really great to work in the same place that I live and where I'm raising my kids, so thank you so much.
Awesome. Welcome.
Next, we have firefighter Alan Johnson. Y'all may recognize Alan. Alan came to work with us a few years ago. His heart took him in another direction. He excelled the first time he came through, so he reached back out to us and wanted to get back on. He missed it. I said, you got to go back through the process. He excelled to the top again. So Alan has come back to Clayton. He has four and a half years in the fire service, currently volunteers at Strickland's Crossroads. Alan started his career at Pender County Fire Department as a full-time before come to Clayton. When Alan isn't working, you should be careful about putting this in there, you can usually find him driving dump trucks. So during winter storms, Alan, they may pull you off my fire truck and put you on dump trucks. That's his part-time job. Alan really recently got married in September 2022. Some of his favorite hobbies include playing in men's basketball and softball leagues and playing in weekend softball tournaments.
It's a, it's a pleasure to be back here at Town of Clayton, and I'm, I'm looking forward for the opportunity to serve as a first responder in the town of Clayton.
Welcome.
And last, our recent promotion, engineer Marshall Smith was promoted to firefighter to engineer or fire equipment operator. He is married with four daughters, and Marshall has one year of service with the Clayton Fire Department, had five years from the Smithfield Fire Department before come to Clayton. Marshall spent six years in the Army stationed at Fort Bragg as an infantryman.
I just want to say thank you for this opportunity, and I'm glad to be serving the community I live in. So, thank you.
Congratulations.
And I would say typically you don't see somebody promote that quick, but Marshall has rose to the top in his time at Smithfield, made a difference when he came here, and he did real rise quickly. Thank y'all.
That's awesome. Welcome. The fire department basketball team needs all the help they can get, for the record. Too much fun. All right. Up next is going to be the Clayton Women's Day proclamation, and I'll give the floor to Bernice Lopez before I read our proclamation. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm, I'm going to try not to talk Puerto Rican today, so we'll see how this goes. I come today here as the president for Clayton Women and Networking, and I, I will like to, I have a petition to proclaim March 8th as Clayton Officials' Women's Day. My request is an effort to recognize a contribution to our town made by past, present, and future Clayton women. Over the years, we, women have proven to be an essential part of the growth of our town, and our contributions have directly impacted the social and economic development as well as the vitality of Clayton. It is a fact that we're leaders, businesswomen, elected officials, community advocates, doctors, attorneys, students, educators, law of realtors, members of the police, members of the firefighters, business owners, just to name a few. Over the years, we have seen an active participation of great female leaders in this community, and it is a fact that many of And it is a fact that many of our first women come straight out our little town of Clayton. So in an effort to celebrate the hardworking women that have traced the path for many of us in this room today, I come to you with this petition as a symbol of the future to create a legacy for the generations to come so that they don't have to fight for a seat at the table. Because together here today, we have already pulled that seat for them to take. But nothing else to say, I just ask that you grant our petition.
Well, I'm kind of in a tough spot because you just pretty much read all the content.
I know, I was trying not to.
Yeah, I'm like, okay Bernice, she didn't set the mayor up to win, but it's okay. I brought my glasses so I could read this because I'm honored, as, as so is this council, to proclaim March 8th as Clayton Women's Day. Town of Clayton Proclamation, March 8th, 2023, as Clayton Women's Day. Whereas over the years, we have seen the activity, participation of great female leaders in our community. And it is a fact that many of these first women have come straight from our little town of Clayton. And whereas we are leaders, businesswomen, elected officials, community advocates, doctors, attorneys, students, educators, shout out to the realtors and business owners, to name a few. And whereas over the years, we have proven to be an essential part of the growth of our town and our contributions have directly impacted the social and economic development as well as the vitality of Clayton. And whereas many amazing women from our town have been locally and internationally recognized, we have represented you and our town proudly. And now therefore, on behalf of the Town Council of Clayton, I, Mayor McLeod, hereby proclaim March 8th, 2023, as Clayton Women's Day, proclaim this sixth day of March, 2023. And I would like to ask you all to join me up front and let's get a picture.
Do my native powers become my picture? Thank you so much. What would happen if it's there?
Yep, I will. Get in. Okay. You tight?
Thank you.
And up next, the next item on the agenda is going to be a combination of item 5C and D, which is Traumatic Brain Injury TBI Awareness Month Proclamation as well as Development Disability Awareness Month Proclamation. And I'll give you the floor.
I really didn't have anything prepared to say, but I did want to say thank you guys for the recognition and proclaiming the month of March as Developmental Disability Awareness Month as well as Traumatic Brain Injury Awareness Month. We have a day program down on 42 that serves individuals in this community. And just on behalf of everybody, we're very thankful for the recognition and awareness that it, that you guys are bringing to the community.
Thank you, and we thank you all for all you do for, for Town of Clayton and our citizens. All right. Abound Health is a statewide agency providing support and services to people in, with intellectual and developmental disabilities with offices across the state, including one of our largest in Raleigh. Tonight, the Town of Clayton will recognize March 2023 as Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month in Clayton, North Carolina. This proclamation will lend official recognition to the importance of acceptance and inclusion while educating the public on the unique abilities of people who have intellectual and developmental disabilities and the value they bring to each community. Abound Health pilots a new Medicaid waiver program that serves individuals with traumatic brain injury, TBI. TBI Awareness Month is also March. The Town of Clayton would like to proclaim TBI Awareness Month, duly proclaimed this sixth day of March by the Honorable Mayor and Clayton Town Council.
Thank you.
And we thank you. All right, up next on the agenda will be public hearings. And we're going to begin with Project Life Dust Development Agreement.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. This is Patrick Pierce, Economic Development Director, requesting that we continue this to the next meeting.
All right. So we will continue this until the March 20th, 2023 regular meeting. Thanks, sir. The next item on the public hearing is the 2023-06 SPA Vincent's Pub Alternative Sign Plan Amendment. And I will give the floor to our Planning Director, Ben Howell.
Good evening, Council. So this item is an amendment to an existing approved alternative sign plan for Vincent, Vincent's Pub. Their alternative sign plan was originally approved in 2018. And this amendment is to add signage, revise approved signage, and remove one sign. Vincent's Pub's located on, at 800 East Main Street. The current approved signage is shown on the screen here with the hanging sign or the projecting sign on the Main Street frontage and painted signage on either, on the side of the building. And then also, they were originally approved for painted signage on the rear of the building. The proposed signage would add a painted sign on the front of the building, refresh signage on the side of the building and add a parking signage on the side and add window signage along the front of the building directing folks to the main entrance. And it would also move the projecting sign that's currently on Main Street frontage over to the side of the building over their entrance. And it would, they're also proposing to remove the rear sign, the rear painted sign that was never completed and remove one window sign. So you'll see here the existing signage that was permitted through the original alternative sign plan, totaled 105 square feet with the, that's with the signage removed. And then the proposed additional signage totals 133.63 square feet for a new total of 283 square feet. Or 238 square feet, sorry. For the alternative sign plans, the review criteria is listed on the screen. So the first review criteria is that components of the alternative sign plan shall be consistent with Town of Clayton general design guidelines. The general design guidelines include the following recommendation to keep signs simple. Too many combinations of colors, typefaces, and symbols can result in visual chaos. Staff believes that they do meet this criteria. The second criteria listed on the screen is regarding the proposed sign design size, color, illumination, and placement are compatible in style and character with the joint, with neighbor, with the buildings it's on as well as the district. It's noted they had an alternative sign plan approved for the location in 2018. The proposed additional signage is compatible with the existing signage in the structure. And the site is located in Central Business zoning district, which staff believes that the existing and the proposed signage is compatible with that district. Third criteria is regarding innovative use of materials and design. Staff believes that the proposed addition of painted signage and small directional signage for the parking area is unique to the site. The design scale and placement of the proposed signage is compatible with the existing signage on site. The new proposed signage is compatible with the surrounding area and zoning districts. The proposed signage is consistent with the adopted downtown master plan. And the proposed signage, staff believes, will minimize distractions and provide additional information and direction for parking on the site. Factors for the Town Council to consider. Town Council may impose conditions of approval to carry out the intent of the alternative sign plan while still permitting each sign user opportunities for effective identification and communication. These conditions may include, but are not limited to specification of colors, reductions in the allowable number of signs, total sign face area, location of signs, and types of signs allowed. And finally, staff recommends approval of the proposed alternative sign plan amendment as presented. And there is a resolution in your agenda packet if you do so choose to approve the, this amendment for approving it. The applicant is here and is planning to also make a presentation.
All right, this has been noted as a public hearing. I'll now open the public hearing and anyone wishing to speak, please step forward and state your name for the record.
Thank you, Ben. Emily Beddingfield, Planning and Entitlement Manager for Lipscomb Development here this evening as the applicant. Ben covered all the technical details, so I just wanted to take a second and talk about why we're asking for this and some of the benefits that we see. I don't know how to use this button. So as Ben said, we're proposing the changes to, the biggest change you're going to see is this new painted sign that is going to front on Main Street. Of course, currently, there's just that relatively very small projecting sign. In my mind, it does not scream out restaurant, it doesn't scream out Vincent's Pub is right here to pedestrian traffic, to vehicular traffic. We actually stood across the street and stared at the building and said, what is missing? Something's missing. And I looked at that giant black stripe that on a building that's historic like this was always intended to hold signage and said, we're missing a sign. So I think the combination of sign and the new landscaping that is going to be out there is going to do so much to really balance out the feel of this building, to enhance its relationship to Main Street and I think really helps serve even more as a gateway into downtown as we're coming down Main Street. It's not going to be sort of a nondescript blue building, it's going to have some really unique signage. We're lucky to have this sort of signage allowance in the town where we can come before the council and ask for things that are a little bit outside of the box because signage has a lot of boxes that you have to meet. Sign code is no joke, I know, because I wrote it. It was a mess, but we, we included provisions for alternative sign plans like this specifically to allow for creativity because we don't want anybody to feel like they are in a box, especially in our downtown. So I'm really excited to bring what I think is a fun proposal to y'all this evening. I think relocating that projecting sign to the main entrance is going to do a lot to help direct people to the right door. That combined with the door signs here, we get a lot of people that show up and they're kind of looking in the doors and they're not really sure which way to go. So we've got these big fingers pointing them in the right direction and then we'll have that sign over the door so they really know where they're at. And then having some additions like this new parking sign on the side of the building. Again, we get a lot of people who I think drive past and then we have a lot of people who try to enter or they're past it, right? And then they try to enter into the exit only section of the parking area. So it being a one-way, it just really needs to be better signed. We're enhancing the entrance only and exit only signage to be larger letters, clear, while still staying within that four-square-foot maximum size that the town sets. And overall, I think adding a little bit of black shading behind the Vincent's sign, again, it's just going to really make it pop. It's going to make the whole building stand out more, better gateway into town. Again, this was a fun one. It's fun, I think it'll be fun to see implemented. Happy to answer any questions that you guys may have about this.
Questions or comments? All right, thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wish to speak on this? No one else wishing to speak, I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to council for their discussion. Mr. Thompson?
I think it only enhances the, the beautification of Main Street and the property and it, it really looks classy and, but not gaudy. It's classy, simple, but it definitely enhances the, the property, I think. So I'll make a motion that we approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for the adoption of Resolution 2023-10. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like so? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, now we're going to jump over to staff reports, beginning with the Town Manager.
Mr. Mayor and Council, first, just wanted to say thank you for those that showed up for the, excuse me, the Employee Appreciation Event on Friday. Had a lot of happy folks and really appreciated your presence there. So thank you again. Just a couple, really quick, a couple of dates coming up. This Friday, actually, we'll be doing the first employee litter sweep. I think we've discussed that previously as a, as an added effort for the town staff to get out there and hopefully pick up some of the trash along some of our corridors. So we've got two times there that different groups will be going out. On the 11th, Daley and Vincent here at the Clayton Center, if anybody's interested. On the 12th, Fairy Tales on Ice featuring Beauty and the Beast will also be here. We've got the Town of Clayton Vendor Expo to, which on March 14th. So any opportunities for businesses in the area that are interested in doing business with the Town of Clayton? We're looking forward to having folks come, find out more about what they have to do to get signed up. Excuse me. And then last, Parks and Rec has a pickleball tournament on the 18th and 19th for those that are interested. Other than that, that's all I've got for tonight.
All right, thank you, sir. On Town Attorney. Town Clerk.
No report.
All right, now we're going to go for a lap status update with Planning Director.
Good evening, just a quick update to let you know that we have been offered and have accepted lap funding in the amount of a little over $1.2 million for the Shotwell Road Program project. We have been working with DOT and Campo and DOT is applying for some, to a carbon reduction program for funding to cover the remaining amount. We're very hopeful that we will receive that funding as well and that we'll be able to get this project underway. But just wanted to let y'all know that we are moving forward as of right now. We've accepted lap funding and should find out, and I believe DOT thinks by April or May, about the carbon reduction funding and if we can move forward with the project.
Great news, thank you. And next will be the Clayton Urbanized Area Update.
Yeah, so a couple of things with this. So as you may or may not know, with the 2020 census, Clayton has now been designated, the Clayton area has been designated as an urbanized area. We have hit over, we've crossed over the 50,000 threshold in population when you count Clayton and part of Archer's Lodge and a couple of other areas just surrounding us. So with that, there's several things that fall into that. One is a, and it's an urbanized area. There is technically, an urbanized area is, when you hit an urbanized area, you form a new MPO. We are currently under the Campo MPO or the Campo Metropolitan Planning Area. So we do not expect to be forming our new, a new MPO on our own. We do expect to stay with Campo. But we are having a meeting with Campo and NC DOT and town staff next week to discuss it and just to make sure that everyone's on the same page. Members of Johnson County as well as Archer's Lodge are also invited to that meeting. So we'll, we'll be talking about it, but at this point, we don't expect to change, to create our own MPO. A couple other, one other thing that becoming an urbanized area does also provide is it actually will A couple other, one other thing that becoming an urbanized area does also provide is it actually will now provide us access to dedicated transit funding. From the Federal Transit Administration through their formula of 5310 program. We're still learning about that and still trying to get up to speed on that. But just wanted to give you a heads up that that is a funding source that we are going to be able to access. It is unlike a, it's technically completed through a grant agreement, but it is formula funds that are dedicated to us as an urban area. That will flow through the state, but they will flow to us once we have projects we can use those funds on. They will generally be 80, 20, an 80%, 20% local match required for capital projects. Or if we do, we do, we are allowed to use these funds for operating projects at a 50/50 match generally. There's a lot more rules than that, but generally speaking, that's that's sort of the upshot. We will be able to access these funds as early as federal fiscal year 24, which starts October 1st of this year. However, we will not know how much we would get until January, February of next year. As usual, the federal government runs a little bit behind. But based on similar sized small MPOs to us and what they've received in formula funds in the past. We can expect it to be anywhere from, you know, it looks like it could be as much as 800,000 to a million dollars. But we'll see for certain, you know, early next year. In the meantime, staff will continue to get, you know, trained up and informed on the program. And then we'll be coming to you over the next couple of years to start trying to figure out ways we can utilize that funding. We do, because they are formula funds, we do have multiple years to spend them. They're more or less guaranteed every year. And you can wait several years before you start spending them and spend back depending on the type of program you do. So it's not something that we have to start using spending immediately. So we do have time to prepare and and figure out exactly what we're going to do with them. But wanted to let you know that good news as well.
Any questions or comments? All right. Thank you, Ben.
Thanks.
All right, at this time, I'll open the floor for informal discussion and public comment. Anyone wishing to speak, please step forward and state your name for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members and sports staff. My name is Tim Murray. I live right here in downtown Clayton on on six, at 618 Barber Street. I'm here tonight to express the concerns my wife Tammy and I have regarding the terror terrible. Sewers sewage smell that covers the downtown area of Clayton many evenings. I understand that this might be caused due to the sewage treatment plant operating at or past full capacity. If so, this is a problem that needs addressing before 2025. We absolutely love living in Clayton, but our enjoyment of this of our town is being impacted by this terrible odor. As the nice weather arrives, it will be even more of a problem. As we would typically be outside enjoying our pool in our yard with our family and friends. And sometimes late into the evening. I believe the stench will also inevitably impact local outdoor dining, cocktail venues. Last night festivities and other fun evening events that you all, you know, work so hard to make special here in in Clayton. You know, everybody in this room and so many other people are working so hard to make Clayton a wonderful place to live. And a great destination for people who don't live here. This will all be undone if this problem continues. Last night I made the unfortunate mistake of leaving my door open for a few minutes while I walked my dog, my dog Luna. The smell immediately got into the house and was strong enough to make my wife nauseous and headachy. We and our neighbors shouldn't have to live in fear of opening our doors, but at this point, this is how we are living after sunset. We're asking you, Mr. Mayor, Town Council, to investigate and take whatever steps necessary to remedy this problem before the heat of the summer. The new treatment facility, the new treatment plant will be a great asset in the long term, but we kind of need immediate relief now. And I'm not sure if any of you have smelled it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And, you know, lifelong residents here, it's not the first time. Or just for any of us born here to smell that. Forty plus years. I'm going to ask Rich to to speak about this because he's got the whole engineering background and can explain to you why it is. The way it is and what the longevity is and what we're doing to address that. Because in the 40 years of living here with the same wastewater treatment plant. We have installed all the correct things that reduce the odor. But there's some circumstances that have arisen. There's some, Rich tell you because he's he's the engineer and the mayor is not. So Rich, I'm turning it over to you.
Now, that's a little, that's dangerous because the engineer to me could come out and we could get a little too deep in it. And actually, Bill Simpson, our wastewater superintendent is here as well. But the high level kind of explanation, I guess, would be right now with the time of year and the fluctuations in the temperature. As well as the high level of rain that we've had the last several, well, basically month and a half, it feels like. The way that we've been able to handle our solids at the facility, unfortunately, those get land applied to different farms or other receiving properties in the area. Due to this wetness of the ground, they can only take so much and at certain times. So unfortunately, what that does is it makes us have to hold those longer. The staff have been doing everything they can to kind of control what happens within those processes. Wastewater treatment plants are big bug farms. The bugs are biological process. The fluctuation in the in the temperatures as well as how long they have to sit there and continue to. Work on the different materials that are in there, that can cause some of that smell. We have taken efforts at this point to secure other locations that we can bring those solids. To be able to get them offsite sooner so that we can remove them and and remove that any of that odor. But that is going to take place over time. I believe that we've gotten that handled. I'm looking to build to make sure that we're all set to be able to do that. However, we have heard reports of odors coming from other parts of town as well. So we are asking anybody from the public that does have an issue to call the 919-553-1530 number. That's our after hours response. Again, that's 919-553-1530. If we can get the record of where the phone call, excuse me, where the odor is and the address of the person calling. Our staff can go out and investigate to confirm where that odor may be coming from, or at least eliminate potential locations. Again, there's several different places in town that could cause that just for different pumps running at different times of the day. But essentially for what we can control at the at the plant, we've had a team of staff working on that here the last few weeks to make sure that we are in a position to handle it moving forward. And again, weather, weather is our enemy in a lot of ways, but we do hope that we're we're past that at this point. So we understand that the quality of life impact to you and we certainly want to make sure that we can clear that up as soon as possible. And I believe we've we've taken some additional measures to go ahead and give us smaller alternatives to be able to handle that moving forward.
Well, we all look, we all look forward to cleaner air. So thank you. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, and thank your wife for joining us this evening and for addressing that. You know, it's been a real conversation on social media, why this is. And, you know, there are a lot of little natural extenuating circumstances that are beyond our control. But as soon as we're able to get it out to the fields and get them sprayed and get rid of it, then we're, you know, we don't have this issue. But of course, all of us have ridden by in our car with the air conditioner on and the windows rolled up. And once that comes in through your air conditioner, there's no need to roll your window down because it's the same on the outside of the car as it is on the inside. But we do thank you both for, for, you know, coming out tonight and for creating some awareness for everybody. Who may be watching us on the camera through social media to, so that we can also share what Rich had to say about why this is the way it is. And hopefully it's a short term so that we can enjoy our summer evenings outside. Absolutely. So thank you both. All right, anyone else? If not, I'll turn it over to council for comments. Thank you. All right, being none, then I will entertain a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
To discuss an economic development. In association with economic development. I'm sorry, my eyes are crossed. All right, I got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And I oppose like son? Motion carries.
So I've been wondering if this is just for a day and a half. Just to talk about the office and who's good. And that's how I look at it. What time did you do it?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Um, yeah, yeah. Right. I don't know, I don't know. That's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying. Yeah. Yeah. Oh yeah. I mean, I agree with you. It's powerful, which is.
It used to be.
Yeah.
It used to almost take forever.
Yeah.
That's what's good. If I go out and stuff like that, you know, this is how that thing started.
That's bad. Yeah.
This is where now it's hard because my purpose has been so clear to the people. You know, then it shows.
Five or six. It's possible. It's a very good. Oh yeah. I didn't. Got to do it. Mm-hmm. Are y'all staying in here for the protest? Awesome. Are you, are you? Are you? No. Yeah, that means bro. You gotta drink more like he does. I had to start by walking and I don't like it now. I've, I've had four days in a row, so. And walking around the parking lot at the damn hotel. Yeah. Yeah. I'm not walking by your house, you wanna know why I'm not walking by your house? I'm not walking by your house because I don't like that damn fan thing you got in the yard. Because I want one and I know the price tag and if I made the money you made, I would have one. It's a hundred dollar car. Oh. It's nice as hell, are you kidding me? How fun to jump in and just go. It is a, it's another mortgage. Go stay at my hotel, come on. Oh, I see.
It's ridiculous.
Okay, well, Amelia may like, can we throw the dogs in there and go? I like it. There you go. A money generator. Alright.
Yeah, we're like.
There you go, y'all. We just wanna. Wow. I think it's a good point. Okay, we're ready. Let's do it. By the Lord's. Uh-huh. So my question is, are they looking in the back door to get out of this? What's your gut feel on it? Yeah. I mean, how can you be aware and, and in the environment that we are all in and they are in? Not to realize cost are astronomical on any project, right? And for them to be like, you know, oh, well, this is gonna be more. And if you can't extend the timeline, then we're not gonna be able to work the deal. Like, that, that, that don't make sense to me. Like, I feel like they should know that. That's why I'm wondering if they're just looking for a way out. I don't know. That's why, that's where your gut feel is. Yeah. So we got a lot invested in it. We got a lot of your time and money invested in it. Well, you, you, we want to know your professional opinion and call this. We don't do this shit like you do it. So are we spinning wheels and wasting our time? Or is this? Well, you can star, star, star the word or whatever. You know what I'm saying, Patrick? We don't know. Like, po- probably we could let it ride and it'd be no big deal. But, uh, we don't wanna throw away all the time and effort and energy you put into looking if you think it's gonna work out and be a great deal. Or if you think, man, this is more work than it's worth, let's just.
You don't want to. Be back.
Yeah. Yeah. Over the next couple of years. Man, in the next five years, that stuff's gonna be about. They're gonna take their hundred fifty million dollars and buy it back. Are they new at this? Sounds amateurish to me. What do I know? Oh, Jesus. I don't thi- I don't think there's a, I don't think they need a bargaining chip. I mean, I want you to understand they're so arrogant that they don't need nothing. You know, and not just from like you or us, but they don't need anything from anybody because, you know, that thing's gonna explode into a hundred fifty million dollar piece of property. And then they're gonna get residuals off of that and for whatever. But I'm just saying, there's no need for us to extend out olive branch when they don't need our olive branch. They can buy olive branch or whatever. That's just my. I'm trying to. I see the best. No. It's actually fair to do more.
And that's why I took the. I almost lost it because I was covered by. Yeah, and that's what we're seeing as first year, that's what we're seeing. I don't get along for a part of it. That's just, that's part of it. We, we.
Does everybody agree with that? We're just saying, we're gonna follow the county and if you wanna continue with this project, you're gonna have to follow the county's. And maybe there's somebody out there that's better prepared. You know, and maybe that's just my intuitive here because I've gotten so much of people's out. But I just don't feel like these people have their academic. And they're just trying to flounder to try to make this deal work. And hopefully it's a. Have somebody with the steady counsel. Alright, there's plenty out there that, that's certain. Alright. That's what we're thinking, yeah. Right. Yeah. But I think counsel wants you to realize this is not looking upon a failure on anything that you've done as a profession. Or a waste of our investment funding. That's not the case. As a matter of fact, Jason's doing. It's a huge force that we have this educational benefit, right? We've had this experience that we know we're better, we're wiser. Somebody else is out there waiting, so. We'll find. Yeah, good. Good luck. Yeah, good luck. Yeah. I keep it in other parts of the country. So, you know, like, at least the email tomorrow will under- address. It's like. Just wanna make sure it's a strong. Hell, no more than that damn. I know you're turning on Love Bar Street. Good lord. Yeah, it's true. There's a hundred and fifty years old Wembley building outside of. Well, he sold the property already with the condition he had to leave the backcountry there. Uh, before you could build. And then these people that, you know, bought them, they now sold them and said that. From six point five.
There will come a time in this process that they will need us to do something else. And I think we have to start out like before and being able to meet them a little bit. You know, that's all we're gonna be able to do moving forward, whatever it is, it's gonna be a little bit. But at least we're consistent in our little bit, right? It is. Yeah, because I think it does a lot of money. Keep ballin' play.
Josh, is there a water two word pipeline gonna go down Little Creek Turf Road like back from Bowling Street behind those lines? And when is that scheduled roughly? And do we know which side of the road that intersection is doing?
So if you're riding out there, it's on the right side, the pipes and all that stuff going on the right side of the road going toward Frankfort. Or it's not on the left side, like in the curve? Okay, so if people Okay, so if people own the property on the left side before you get to the intersection or realigning, like the Pounds property, if they want to connect, they'll be able to do so? Right? Okay, that's all I need to know. He's he Mr. Pounds has inquired with me and I thought about that too.
So getting water to the property wouldn't be an issue, but water but sewer would be an issue.
But it's not like going in into next year. Yeah. Are property owners gonna be made aware of all this and all that stuff? Who's responsibility? So where's Brian? Okay, so it's gonna be on his side. There's nobody that's contacted him about this is gonna go in his front yard or in the right of way of his front yard. But it's not the town that plays this.
Yeah, I think that's what Pounds is saying.
Someone never told him. He could steal without I'll let him think. He's trying to make he's trying to keep this property ready for for sale probably so. But he wants to make sure we can tie in to the water before we sell for less than half a thousand. These are fine. I will, but Yeah, his elevator ain't going all the way to the top. Because he's like, well, when you call town staff, nobody knows anything. They transfer to somebody else, transfer to somebody else. And so I just figured I'd come up to the mayor and let him tell let him do his job and figure out what. Like I don't think he's doing anything. I think he's trying to tee it up to sell that property. That it uses. And his house is closest to the He's got like a twenty foot deep front yard. Like after the um the little, you know, tent houses or whatever built on the Cox property, then there's the Pounds property. The ladies home where the big house park is. Okay, I'll let him know. I'll let him know. All in favor, say aye.
This council?
If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Right.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like some? Motion carries. Good night. Thank you.
Good night.